Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the city council meeting, February 5th, 2024. With that, if we could have roll call, please.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstan?
Here.
Sutherland?
Yeah.
Yanko?
Here.
McCullough?
Here.
Schwabs?
Here.
Gents?
Here.
Solberg?
Here.
Schlue?
Here.
Erdman?
Here.
Sommerfeld?
Here.
Well, no special recognitions this evening, other than it's nice to see folks in the audience. So thank you for showing up and being a part of our meeting this evening. With that, if we could have approval of minutes. Anybody like to make a motion? Ryland?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Thank you, Laura. Any discussion? All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post. Thank you. Moving on to no public hearings this evening. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can stand at the podium and speak for three minutes or less on agenda items for the evening. Please give us your name, your address, and do turn the microphone on if you step up to the podium. With that, we'll open up public comments.
Good evening. My name is Chris Corpola. My address is 525 Oak Park Circle here in Menominee. And I am speaking to you this evening in my capacity as the Dunn County manager. I am going to sort of start a story that you're going to hear through a series of people who will speak to you over the next couple of minutes. Back when I took this job 18 months ago, I did a little bit of a deep dive into economic development in our area and spoke to a number of economic development partners. That led to us pulling together an economic development summit this last summer of local stakeholders in the economic development world. The Dunn County Economic Development Corporation, the Greater Menominee Development Corporation, Momentum West, University of Wisconsin Stought, the Chamber of Commerce, Workforce Resource, Downtown Menominee, CBTC. Trying to think I've got most of them. And we came together over two days to really start to look at how we could come together to enhance economic development services in Dunn County. And so we have a very exciting model that we're going to share with you this evening that's coming up for you for possible decision later on in the evening. And it involves a partnership with UW Stought, Dunn County Economic Development, Dunn County, the City of Menominee, and the Greater Menominee Development Corporation to create a position of a director of economic development for our entire area, greater Dunn County area. And with that, I'm going to turn over the microphone to Chancellor Frank, who's going to talk with you about UW Stought's portion of that proposal.
Thank you, Chris.
Hello, everybody. I'm Catherine Frank. I'm the chancellor at UW Stought. And I too would like to speak on behalf of this great partnership. It is all about collaboration. And it's truly one of the best moments that I have experienced here in terms of all of these entities coming together and saying, how can we work together to better support our community? So one of the things that was pushed us forward at UW Stought is we have a retirement in terms of a staff position that oversees the work of the Stought Technology Park. And so timing was right for us when this idea came forward. And then we thought about the resources that each of us had to contribute to this position. And one of the things that Stought can contribute is a very competitive benefits package. And that usually does not come with this sort of position. So we feel that combining our resources, thinking about what we can do to create a competitive salary and a competitive benefits package will really work to attract a competitive pool for this position. So we're excited about that. And as we look forward, it's really about sharing goals, sharing ideas, sharing possibilities. And when we think about one of the major things that's impacting our region right now, and that is of course, the Previa HSHS situation. In this instance, we would have had a single point person, right, that could then liaise among different stakeholders throughout our community to help organize quickly and to make sure those communication channels were really shored up and working effectively. So we are very excited about this possibility. And again, it's all about collaboration and supporting our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Hello, I'm Bob Schultz, and I'm here representing the Stought Technology Park. And I'm here to express the board's unanimous support for the proposed Director of Economic Development. It is the board's opinion that this shared position will not only leverage our regional financial resources for delivering economic development, but will also increase coordination across the four entities, the county, the city, UW Stought, and the Stought Technology Park when responding to business inquiries or regional events. It was more than three decades ago when the City of Menominee, UW Stought, and Exile Energy proposed the unique collaboration, creating the successful Stought Business Park. And this new shared economic development position is just another creative example of how organizations in this county can work together to deliver economic development efforts cost-effectively and without duplicating resources. The Stought Technology Park Board of Directors would ask that you help support this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Lori Reardon, and I'm representing the Dunn County Economic Corporation. I'm the past president. I have our current president, Steve Lindahl, here. And I am here to support this position as well. I've had the great fortune of being on this board for about five years, and I've been was president for two years. And one of the things that really excites me about this, and you've heard this from all the representatives today, is just the collaboration of the partners and the timing of this particular position. The position's going to focus on communities all around Dunn County, not just Menominee. Our current economic board consists of members from all of the communities, which is what really makes it, I think, a very rich, a very rich board. So that's what I have to say. And again, I just can't focus enough on on the unity of the partners right now and how this collaboration and the timing just couldn't be more perfect. So thank you for listening to us tonight.
Thank you, Lori.
So good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be with you. My name is Dan Lidle. I'm Director of Economic Development and Regional Campus Management for Chippewa Valley Technical College. I oversee our Menominee campus here. And I want to talk with you as it pertains to the MOU from more of a regional perspective. CBDC covers 11 counties. I've had the pleasure of being on the Dunn EDC board for nearly 10 years. I'm the current president of the Greater Menominee Development Corporation. I'm past board chair of the Dunn EDC, past board chair of the Pire CDC, the Secretary Treasurer of the Regional Business Fund, and executive committee member for the St. Croix Valley Business Innovation Center. So I cast a really wide net in working with our economic development partners. And I can say flat out, and I've been with the technical college for 10 years. I'm a Menominee resident, and I'm a proud Stought graduate, and I have a lot of time, energy, and blood, sweat, and tears invested into Dunn County and Menominee, and I want to see it flourish. I want its future to be a really bright one. And I can tell you, across our 11 county district, at least in west central Wisconsin, nothing like a county-wide economic development summit has ever taken place in the last several decades. But it happened here. It happened here in Menominee to help drive the efforts, not just of the city, but of the larger county community and all of its municipalities. So the entities that were referenced before represent every single entity or organization that has a hand in economic development, workforce development, or community development. And I always like to kind of point out that those three factors are like a three-legged stool. And if you kick any one of those out, the other two have a hard time maintaining their balance on their own. They have to work in collaboration. And to double down on what was mentioned by my colleagues before, this represents the boldest, strongest, most progressive, innovative, creative partnership in economic development in west central Wisconsin. And it's only happening because of a unbelievable desire to collaborate, to come together, to help promote Menominee. And when I look across the region, one of the things that I notice is in some areas, Dunn County and Menominee, we're losing the race to some of our neighbors, to Chippewa, to Barron County. Some of our counties that don't have universities. We're a university city. We're a university county. But we can't drive the similar type of economic development where that enormous resource doesn't exist, but it does exist here. And we're finally all at the same table, coming up with a unified vision for how to move this forward. And I couldn't be more proud to be a part of it. And I couldn't be more proud to work with the folks that have come up with this this MOU for you to review. And again, we really thank you for the opportunity. But in closing, I just want to say that I'm really proud of the work that has been done and couldn't be more proud of this effort, this unified effort, one vision moving forward. Not three visions, one vision all coming together. And that's where we're at today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate that. And the microphone is open. If anybody else would like to speak on agenda items for the evening, now is your opportunity. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comments, move on with the rest of our meeting. Under unfinished business, there is no unfinished business. That brings us down to new business. 6A, consideration of Bobcat Plus quote for water department compact excavator. Discussion and possible action. I'll turn this over to Dave. Dave?
Yes, so our water department has targeted a compact excavator for, I think, the last two years. They had budgeted $82,000 in this year's budget for this purchase. We did go out for quotes and received eight quotes. There was two that were not responsive. So the remaining quotes ranged from $84,505.62 to $118,450. We're recommending the lowest responsive quote, which was from Badger, sorry, Bobcat Plus for a Bobcat E48-R2 compact excavator at a cost of $84,505.62. Later on in your packet, there is a budget transfer to cover the about $2,500 that is over our allotted budget, but most of it is already in our budget.
Hey, thank you, David. Ryland?
Looking at the list of bids, what was the issue with the Johnson tractor bid? Because that did come on $12,000 lower.
Yep. So the first Johnson tractor bid was a smaller unit than we had specified. We'd specified a weight range, and it was a smaller unit to that. The second one is a unit that doesn't exist. I think they just used the wrong number on their bid, but we can't purchase something that doesn't exist. So I think they meant to bid a U48-3R-3AP, but their bid form said KX048, which isn't an actual device. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I believe also, you know, this is utility funding.
Yes, this is from the water utility. Our other departments will use it and will reimburse the water utility, but it is out of the water utility, yes.
And just point of interest here, I've been after Lowell and the other departments to have one of these for a number of years because they are extremely handy. Otherwise, we have to load the big excavator up onto the flatbed and take it out and about. And this is a nice, tight spot for digging. Jeremy's here too. And the number of times that we would use a machine like this, I'm really surprised that the city of Menominee hasn't had one before. So if you have any questions, I know Jeremy would be here to answer any questions too. Otherwise, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Laura?
Like to make a motion to accept the quote from Bobcat Plus for a Bobcat E48-R2 compact excavator at a cost of $84,505.62.
Okay, thank you, Gretchen.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstan?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. 6B, consideration of Halverson Brothers quote for a WWTP sludge lay loadout bay makeup air unit. I'm turning this over to Dave, Mr. Schofield.
Yeah, I did include a photo in the memo, just so that's a it's a big thing to say. So this is essentially a furnace for a garage area. And the existing one is still functioning, but has reached the end of its life and just isn't worth trying to fix as we go forward and we have problems. So we did send this out for quotes. Also, we got three quotes that were all within around $800 of each other. The first two quotes, we did, the lowest two quotes, we did reject. Hurlbert had a statement on there that they reserved the right to adjust the prices if prices went up for materials and that sort of thing. I thought that would be a hard thing to explain to the council why we didn't have a solid quote. And then JFAHUN excluded several items that were included in the other bids. So we are recommending to accept the quote from Halverson Brothers at a cost of $31,890. And I believe we have $40,000 in the budget for this, although Paul can answer that question if it comes up.
Okay, thank you, Dave. And Paul is here tonight. Also, if we have any questions, go ahead. Somebody, Lee?
Oh, Dave, how come it's saying we're getting from Halverson's, but the suggested motion says Holberg?
This, the summary?
I think that was a misprint on our end.
Oh, in the summary?
In the summary, it says.
I apologize. I, that was a.
And it's a slightly different. So it's not the 31063. What was the number?
$31,890.
Eight hundred and ninety.
And it would be from Halverson Plumbing. Make a correction on that. Sorry about that. That slipped by me too. So it'd be Halverson. The motion would be for Halverson. And the amount again, David?
$31,890.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, brought that one. So if anybody would like to support that with a motion, we can do so at this time. Gretchen?
I'd make motion to accept the quote from Halverson Brothers for the WWTP sludge loadout bay makeup air unit at a cost of $31,890.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Gretchen's motion? Go ahead, Eric.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstan?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under 6C, consideration of Cedar Corporation task order for Pine Avenue, Wilson Street to Game Park Road design. Again, I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Schofield, David.
Yeah, so in your packet and on the screen here is a map of this project area. This is a project that's been targeted for, I believe, at least two years. The city has received a $400,000 grant from the Department of Transportation towards this project. And we are planning on constructing it in 2025. I'd like to get going on the design of this so that we can bid it either in late fall or early winter, so that we're ready to go right away in the spring of 2025. So we did request and receive a quote from our task order from Cedar Corporation, the amount of $124,500. That's our recommendation.
Okay, thank you, David. Any questions for David? Go ahead, Chen.
It just, when I read it, it doesn't really say what they're doing. They're making it wider, they adding bike lanes, or what are they doing, I guess?
So that roadway is in bad shape right now. So it's a reconstruct of the existing facility. We'll probably add curb and gutter from what I believe is considered to be Maple Avenue. Or sorry, yeah, Maple Avenue east to Game Park Road. So there's about a block of adding of curb and gutter. And it'll be replacing the water and sewer.
I know that I just traveled on that road tonight. It's getting pretty beat up. That's going down to the school and buses travel that. A lot of traffic on the days travel that, plus in the summertime, the park use. So I think by the end of summer this year, that road's going to definitely need, in need of repair. It's already in need of repair.
Yep. Yeah, especially as you get towards Wilson Avenue, there's quite a bit of, sorry, Wilson Street, there's quite a bit of of rutting in that roadway. If you take a look at it right now, it's in need of reconstruction.
Okay. And you said we had grant monies of how much dollars?
$400,000.
Okay, that really helps. That's great. And is that dedicated for this particular road?
That's for this particular road, and it's for street and storm sewer repairs.
Great. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to council. If you'd like, anybody would like to support this with a motion, they can do so at this time. Lee?
I move approval of the task order from Cedar Corporation for Pine Avenue Design Services at a cost of $124,500.
Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Penny?
I will second Lee's motion.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstan?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yep.
Erdman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moves us down to 6D, proposed development agreement with Atlas Holdings LLC for redevelopment of the former Badger Iron Works site. Discussion and possible motion on action. I'm going to turn this over to Eric.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So as you may remember, several months ago, we brought forward a council potential agreement or a project with the former Badger Iron Works. And this was with Atlas Holdings LLC. I'm pleased to announce that we have come to an agreement for a development in that area. Atlas Holdings has acquired that facility and is in the process of redevelopment and cleaning the building up. And so what we have is we have structured a pay-go development format for you. So for the increment that they create in taxes above $279,000, we will recapture that money in the payment of taxes, and then we will also reissue it to up to 95% to the developer to help continue with the ongoing development of that property for the life of tid number 17. With, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that was well, no, that was well said. And I was just wondering, and Dave just pulled up.
Do we want to pull a map up there?
I think he had one.
There we go, right there, to take a look at that property.
Yeah. And I guess how many acres are we looking at?
What was the exact acreage that we have? I think it's six or seven acres.
I was gonna say 10.
10 acres on that one?
It was 9.6, I think. That's where. But I'll tell you what, it's kind of a weird shape. And what we had looked at in the prior agreement was doing some different things. And then they decided that instead of all of that, they were looking at doing a development here with, you know, bringing in some other businesses and so forth and so on. So it just turned out to be a lot cleaner for the city to approach it from this fashion as a pay-go rather than paying them upfront and so forth. So that when they do develop the project or the lands, it does come back to the city versus the city being strung out a little bit on some extended cash. So I think it's cleaner for the city, and I think it's cleaner for Atlas Holdings besides. That's the difference.
If I can, Mayor, one of the advantages of this particular development agreement, there's two particular nuances of note. Yes, it's an odd-shaped property on there, but in that development agreement, we have the ability for them to create essentially a flag lot. And that flag lot designs allows for this developer to bring in another business, which the mayor was alluding to, to help develop that property and increase its potential value for our tax base and also for their own business purposes. The other advantage, which I think highlights what I think is probably one of the best parts of this, is that as a pay-go, there's no risk on the city where we're in like a case of a pilot, if we were doing money upfront. This is strictly based on the development that's done by Atlas Holdings is the only way that they are going to be able to receive a tax increment payment. So we don't have to borrow and take on any debt service loan in addition to what we already have. But we'll also, we'll be encouraging that development through the years by saying if they're creating incremental value, we can reimburse them for that. And then, of course, as most of you know, in our previous discussions, that property needed some TLC. And this is going to create the vehicle to give that development and hopefully pretty that up as people drive by 94 and will be able to see that development. So we strongly recommend this this development agreement. And a lot of thanks goes to David Schofield for helping create this development agreement with our attorney as well.
Yes, well said, Eric. The other thing that they have now purchased the site. Before, there was some monies to help them in the purchase process. But it was a little bit convoluted. So now they are actually the owners of this site, so they can move this forward. It does clean up a lot of the language, like Eric said too, there's no money that the city would have to borrow to put out for this. And the future developments is what drives this forward. So I think it's, I mean, Dave Schofield, I think he knocked it out of the park on this. Thank you very much for your hard work. I know that Eric and Dave met a number of times with LLC, Atlas LLC. They already have gotten the grounds cleaned up considerably. And they've been working out there on a daily basis to make it safe. And I know that the interior of the building and the exterior of the building and the grounds, the contamination, they've been working hard to remove that and haul it away. So I think it's, it's, it's a positive, positive. I think it's a win for the city, and I think it's a win for Atlas besides. So Penny?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the development agreement with Atlas Holdings at the current Badger Iron Works site.
Good motion. A good motion. Thank you, Eric.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made, seconded. Any discussion, Mary?
Just a point of clarification. Now, we had talked in previous conversations that the city was going to have some money in upfront. Now, that is no longer true. The city doesn't have any money involved in this at the time.
Nope, that's correct.
Okay.
There, good, Eric?
Yeah, so there was conversation about that, and we have those conversations typically with developers. Sometimes when it comes to the money upfront or like a pilot program, we can give, we can give the money, but then we also put in criteria as to how they have to progress in their development. And that, that of course then tries to mitigate the risk each way. And in this particular case, it seemed to make the most sense to be able to do the pay-go. That way, the developer's not under some kind of a timeline or under the gun to get certain things done depending on their capital. This way, they can help develop it and do it in a planned fashion that benefits everybody.
Oh, that was very well said, Eric. Thank you. Time was, you know, they don't know how long it's going to take them to get all the cleaning done. There's silica enriched areas within the building, and then the cleanup outside. The nice thing is about Atlas Holdings, they've got all the equipment and wherewithal and manpower to do it without having to, in fact, he's done some of this work out in New York, et cetera. So he's already got the baseline of what it takes to do this kind of work under him. So I think the right person for the job ended up with the project. So I'm, that just tickles us. So that takes the timeline off the table for them, and it takes the risk factor off the table for us. So that's, that's how this is shaping up. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Yes, Laura?
A question for Eric. You use the phrase "flag lot." Can you explain that?
Yeah, so if we want to go back to the map, so it'd be on that northeast corner. I'm going to get up for a moment.
So essentially, the flag lot, as he, so this is the man. Is my Dana White moment. But we have, we have Badger Iron Works, not Atlas Holdings. It's right, it's right here. This flag lot is this back property here. So that's why it looks like kind of like a flag. So anyway, the point of, the point of this is in that development agreement, there's conversation about creating this flag lot. So in the event Atlas Holdings decides that they want to either lease space or sell this area, they can. And that can be part of that development. So that's, that's why there was that conversation piece. So not only does this have the ability to develop and fix up that area and create it up and make it, make it into a nice employable business, but also this can also then be developed, maybe bring in some other business force, thus benefiting not only Atlas Holdings, but then ultimately the City of Menominee and the other tax.
Great, well said. Thank you, Vanna. I mean, Eric.
She's a little better looking than I am.
You dress well.
Thank you. Indeed.
Any other discussion here on this point of interest? I think it's a, it's a good development. I think it's a positive, positive all the way through. And so roll call vote, please.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstan?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Sommerfeld?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That moves us down to 6E, proposed agreement between the City of Menominee, University of Wisconsin Stought, County of Dunn, Dunn County Economic Development Corporation, Greater Menominee Development Corporation, and the Stought Technology and Business Park to create a Director of Economic Development position. I think this is amazing, number one. I know Lowell and I had talked about this a year or two ago. Really, Eric picked up the ball then and ran it further down the road. I talked to, had discussion with all the partners, the chancellor, the county, Greater Menominee Development, the CBTC, I mean, everybody got involved in the discussion. And I'm really, really, really pleased at the outcome. And, and everybody was positive about what could the results be? I mean, other than everybody doing their own thing, you know, the county doing their own thing, and the city doing their own thing, and here we have a unified effort. And I think it speaks highly of the, the program itself is outstanding. I don't think we can do any better than this. I think partners in this not only unification, but sharing the cost of this besides, you know, we'll all have input. We'll all be able to use the services that this individual will provide. And I think this is one of the best ideas that this, these, this grouping of individuals has have come up with. So with that, Eric, I'll let you finish up with the discussion.
That's well said, Mayor, and and to echo the sentiments of the speakers that spoke during open comments, I just really couldn't be more excited about this potential opportunity. The City of Monomni has had great luck in partnering with all of those entities over the years. And and largely over the past, when it comes to economic development, we've been rather siloed. Now here's a perfect opportunity for us to truly partner, pool our resources together, hire a qualified individual that can help improve our economic standing in our community. And I really can't think of a better way to do it. Sure. Could we try to onboard something like this just ourselves? We could. Could the county do that? Sure, they could. Could Stought? Absolutely. The point is, is that with with the total resources that we have, we're much stronger together, and we will all benefit from this. Not just now, but I think in the long run. So I think this is an important step in the right direction for us to prove economic development. So that way we can not only compete with our neighbors, but also succeed in areas where we may have fell short. So I feel like this is a great opportunity for us. As far as the financing piece of it, you may remember from when we were discussing our budget back in the fall, we had a section in subsidies and then economic development where normally we would have resources and money pooled to pay the Dunn County Economic Development Corporation along with the GMDC. We're going to be able to utilize those resources by funneling those that cash, excuse me, through those entities to then pay for this position. So the total cost that we would be looking at on our end is twenty six thousand dollars that we would help contribute to the position. Dunn County would be contributing a sizable sum and right around the tune of about fifty five thousand dollars. And then the beauty of having Stought, part of it, they have administrative support. They're able to onboard the person as a state employee, which then gives that person the ability to collect benefits. Whereas a lot of times in these economic development positions, they're typically contract. And then that person is busy trying to fundraise to basically keep their job. And they're spending more and more time trying to keep their job than developing, well, the local economy. And we want that person to be able to be focused in on our area as well as Dunn County as a whole. And this agreement, which I think is fantastic, creates that vehicle. And so certainly in administration, we strongly support this and feel that this is an important step to improving our standing in our area.
Well said, Eric. This is a really a unification of all the partners and a unification of all the costs. We share the cost, but we share the results. And I think it's a, it's it's good for everybody. I know Eric said twenty six thousand. I think we had put twenty seven thousand dollars down in our motion.
I'm sorry, yes, twenty seven.
But it's, it's a positive towards the future, and it's money very well spent. So thank you, Eric.
Yes, thank you.
Discussion, or if anybody would like to make a motion, we can do that at this time. Laura?
I am pleased to move to approve the memorandum of agreement as presented and the authorization of an expenditure of twenty seven thousand dollars to be made through tax increment district fifteen.
Good motion. Thank you. Sarah, second. Lee, go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, Mary.
Reading over this, are we asking a lot of one person? Do they have, is he, he, she going to have staff of any kind?
Well, and that is the beauty of it. They will actually become a employee of the university, I believe, with staff that can help assist in that area. And I believe they will also be housed, but shared housing with other entities. So they'll have a main office, but they might be here, they might be at the county and so forth and so on. So but they will actually act as an employee of the university. If I'm incorrect in saying that, Chancellor. No, I am correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Any other questions or discussion? Go ahead, Bridget.
I just want to say this, this is excellent. And to reiterate what Eric said about the importance of the long range portion of this that gets lost, all the energy gets spent trying to interact and get everybody aligned versus actually spending the energy long range, wrong range planning. So I'm really happy about this.
Right, I am too. We are too. And and the other thing is too, we've got some economic advisors that will be helping this person. The Greater Monomni Development Corps is outstanding. I know Dan Lidle plays a huge role in a lot of what's happening in the in the county. And and I know Clark is with the Greater Monomni Development Corps also in the county, their development. But what it really does is it brings everybody to the center, to the table, and have one spokesman or one person to really go out and market. So I think it's this, this is as good as it gets. And I think that we might be setting a new paradigm on how things happen. And other counties and or cities might be looking at how we did it, and they're probably going to want to follow suit besides. So thank you for the motion. I think it's a good motion, Ben. Okay, Ryland?
Just curious, I assume that the Economic Development Board will still exist, and they'll be responsible for hiring and oversight and so on?
Yes, what we are going to plan on doing is there's going to be a hiring committee established from each of those entities, and they'll have controlling interest regarding the Greater Monomni Development and the county and so forth. And I say that correctly?
Yeah, so essentially, as a, as a state employee through UW Stought, we'll go through the hiring process with UW Stought. So we'll have representatives from the Oversight Committee that'll serve. We'll take the training through UW Stought to be able to sit on that hiring panel and then help try to select whomever we may bring on as the Economic Director. And to touch too on that that support, one of the wonderful things about having Stought involved is that they have economic development experts on staff, Seth Hudson, who's in the audience. He will be the direct supervisor for this particular person to help coordinate the daily activities. They are also going to be providing the clerical support, which is critical too for being able to track data, activities, and support that particular person. And then once that person is onboarded, that Oversight Committee and group will have routine meetings to be able to help determine what is the vision for the particular position, help provide an overall guidance, and then the day to day activities then will be monitored, of course, by Mr. Hudson at UW Stought.
The thing is too, he'll be, this person will be able to give reports back to the the different entities. City of Monomni, Greater Monomni Development, the county, of course, UW Stought Tech Park and so forth. So good program, looking forward to a lot of positives from it. So any other things, Lee?
Just a comment. I personally have been on the Dunn County, I think, Corporation, Development Corporation three times. And I was there when it started, and I was the first secretary of the corporation, and we've come a long ways. I think it's great.
Good. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Somerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah. Thank you. Moving down to six F authorized mayor connect to sign petition of direct annexation for a portion of six hundred fiftieth Avenue, also known as Eagle Point Road from the town of Red Cedar. We'll wait for the room to clear. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, again, we are down to six F. The annexation for a portion of six hundred fiftieth Avenue. And basically, all this is, is for me to be able to sign a petition to annex that road. So anybody like to make a motion in favor of that? We could do so at this time. Jeff?
I'll make a motion for to authorize city staff proceed with a petition of direct annexation for a portion of six fiftieth Avenue, also known as Eagle Point Road in the town of Red Cedar as presented.
Okay, is that a good motion? Okay, thank you. Sarah, second to Jeff's motion. Ryland?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Ryland?
Um, am I understanding this correctly? It is just an annexation of the actual road right away and not any property on either side of the road, correct? Ben?
That is correct. Dave can help fill in a little on this. So six fiftieth previously was owned and maintained by the town. We've been in the process of getting portions of it deeded back to the city. You can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe we own this portion.
Yeah, th- these portions are included in this annexation are all owned by the city.
But it's showing up as it's still in the township. So basically, we're just annexing it so it shows up within the City of Monomni. Dave has been in contact with the town on it. They are aware of it. So the process with it, we had to get authorization to do the petition first. Mayor will sign the petition, we'll get it over to the town, we'll bring it back as part of an ordinance in front of the council for you guys to act on. This doesn't need to go down to Plan Commission. It should be a pretty quick ordinance, and then it will show it's within the city.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Any other discussion? And we just need a regular vote on this this evening. So if we can do that at this time, all in favor of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving on to six G special event permit for disc golf tournament. They've had this before out there. There's been no issues. I think it's a great event, and moving it forward would just be somebody would like to make a motion to do so. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the special event permit for the disc golf tournament.
Hey, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Ryland, or I mean, Randy?
I will.
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, and is that subject to insurance, I imagine? In your motion?
Yes.
Okay, subject to insurance in your motion. Randy, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Clarification. All right, any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Moving down to six H proposed lease termination agreement to terminate lease with Foundation Therapy LLC dated October twenty seventh. You know, we, in this building, we have different leases, and sometimes they are extended, sometimes they're terminated for different reasons. They're looking at a different space, and I'll turn it over to Ben. Eric, I think I'll turn it over to Eric and then Ben. Eric?
All right, so so Ben, Ben and I will tackle this one. So Foundation Therapy was upstairs and and they're, sadly, they closed up shop. And they were looking to terminate the lease because we need to be able to try to rent it out to another person. We do have the possibility to bring in another tenant. And so in order for us to be able to do that and proceed further, we're asking city council here to support terminating that particular lease.
Thank you, Ben.
It was well said by Eric on it. This doesn't relieve the individual of any amounts owed previously. We're still working on trying to recoup that, but we do have individuals that are interested in it. So lease termination would be in order so we can try to get it rented and start getting, generating income and just not having it sit there. So that's what is before you right now.
Great, thank you. Penny?
So how does this, so item H, how does this then roll into item I?
So the the next, I can.
What looks like the same space unless I'm.
It's two different spaces. This first one is just where Foundation's Therapy was the sole tenant on it. The next one, they had a different space that they were originally sole tenant on. We brought it, I think, a year and a half, maybe two years ago to the council to do an amendment to add a co-tenant on. The next item would be removing Foundation as co-tenant. So the other co-tenant is the sole tenant at that time. I can explain a little further when we get there.
Okay. I don't want to jump the gun, but yeah, just trying to figure out what this looks like. Because no offense, I wasn't, well, it's been about two years, but I wasn't here when this was originally written. And yeah, what does, I don't want people that want to be in the space be out. But I also agree with the fact that if we have other people who want to rent the space, let's do it.
Yeah, so Foundation's Therapy is currently on two different leases. This is terminating the one. This item is terminating the one they're the sole tenant on. The next one is dealing with the one that they are co-tenant on. And we'll explain that when we get to it. But this one is termination of the sole tenant, and then Dave has something as well.
Right, and typically the leases run out, but this is an early release. So that's why it's termination, David, go ahead.
Yeah, one thing just to clarify, so item six H is in regards to the old city hall. So this is the third floor, south wing. Item I is for third floor, east wing. So those are the two spaces that we're talking about.
Thank you for clarification. Okay, we can continue discussion. Or if somebody would like to make a motion to support, we can do that also at this time. Go ahead, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Foundation's lease termination agreement as presented.
Okay, good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Ryland? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'll second Chad's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, terminate the lease. Any discussion? Okay. Okay, voice forward. All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And then moves us down to six I proposed second amendment to lease with Foundation Therapy LLC and Thrive Psychological and Consulting Services LLC. My glasses.
Yeah, go ahead and jump in there, Ben.
So this item, like I said before, with the east wing, I think, as Dave just stated, that's what this is for. Currently, there are two co-tenants on it. It is Foundation's Therapy LLC and Thrive Psychological and Consulting Services LLC. This is a request to remove Foundation's Therapy off of the lease where Thrive would be the sole tenant after this is done. There's been no issues with Thrive to date. They've been making the payments, and they just want to keep on renting from us on it. This agreement also does allow them to do a sublease to Adult Teen Counseling LLC. Administration had no issue with that as well. We did speak with the owner of Thrive, and she's more than willing and wanting to do this. So that's why it is before council today.
Great, well said. Thank you, Ben. Okay, Penny?
I will make a motion to approve the Foundation's and Thrive lease amendment as presented, removing Foundation Therapy from said lease.
Is there a second to that motion? Eric?
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Moving down to six J consideration of fire department purchase of ice craft rescue equipment with ARPA funds. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So after the recent approval for department has to start moving forward with looking at quotes to spend the ARPA expenditures. The fire department has presented this one along with a couple other ones that you will see here coming up shortly after this ice rescue rapid deployment craft. We have Chief Class that's here in the audience that can be able to talk about how the the craft will be deployed and used presented in front of you. He does have a quote from Atlas Outfitters that he is requesting to utilize to make said purchase.
Hey, actually, I'd be curious, Danny, if you come up, Chief, if you could come up to the podium and yeah, I'll just tell. You know, what, what is this exactly? And how would you use it? And is it only for ice wintertime usage or is it multi-use?
No, it is a, a, an inflatable banana boat almost. It's stored in a small bag. And we used our cylinders from our SCBA to inflate this in a matter of a minute. Ice swift water, it can be used for any type of of water or ice rescue. We currently have one at the downtown station. This would be used at station two.
Okay, so great. So you've had past experience with this?
Absolutely.
Great, okay, good, good. Ryland?
What's the expected lifespan of something like this since it's a inflatable?
We've had the other one for better than ten years, and it comes with a patch kit if we need to. But they're, they're very, they're very durable. So we've used it down below the dam multiple times for training in the swift water in the rocks and.
Do you, do you put a motor on it too then, or?
No, 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 just a small oar.
Okay, all right, cool. So if anybody wants to go for a boat ride, I would recommend that this would be a good one to jump on. All right, any other questions for Chief Class? Well, if anybody would like to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Mary?
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the Ice Rescue Rapid Deployment Craft and Accessories from Atlas Outfitters, ATR, as presented by the Monomni Fire Department. as presented by the Menominee Fire Department using ARPA funds for the amount of seven thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, thank you Randy?
I'll second Mary's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us on to six L.
Okay, okay sir.
Oh, say K. Six K. Consideration of fire department purchase of tractor snow removal lawnmower with ARPA funds. Chief, maybe you can tell us a little bit about that project.
Certainly. So right now we've got three bodies that staff the north fire station and it is a a large station with a lot of of ground to cover. And a lot of times that can be a single office or up there with the ambulances out. And if we get any type of snowfall, trying to keep up with that with a small walk behind a snow blower can be extremely difficult. And maintaining the lawn, I know the streets get busy. When we can get out there and and take care of it, it would be used for that as well. So we will looked at a blower on the front of it, but we're actually going to go with a broom. It's a little bit more efficient, we believe so.
Okay. Seems to me like you won't need one this year.
Nope.
But next year you're going to get dumped on. We'll make up for it, right, right? Okay, well, thank you. Any questions for the chief? Otherwise, if anybody wants to support this with a motion, you can do so at this time. Gretchen?
Just a quick question. Where, how big is it and will it, where will it be stored? Is there?
It's a lawn tractor.
Do you have?
John Deere lawn tractor.
Do you have a shed for it?
Nope, it would be stored inside the station.
Okay, sorry, that's it.
Thank you. And again, any more discussion items or if anybody'd like to make a motion, they can do so Penny?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a twenty twenty-three John Deere X seven thirty signature series tractor accessories as presented by the Menominee Fire Department using ARPA funds in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Okay, good motion. Anybody like to second that motion? Go ahead Ryland.
I'll second Penny's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion Ryland?
I assume that it this is a more efficient use of the time of the fire department than having the parks department do the snow and lawn care or?
I'm trying to maintain and keep up with things when when we get a good snow. Absolutely.
Mary?
Chief, see as you said lawn tractor, is it big enough? You're not going to need something a little bit bigger. You do have a lot of ground to cover.
We do it just to maintain the around the service doors. We've got, we've got five overhead doors on each side of the station. And just to be able to maintain that area fifteen to twenty feet out. So our vehicles can get out without getting stuck on the apron. We can get a run and at least get to the road. So and we, the two gentlemen that spec this out have done lawn care as a business for a few years. So they were pretty well versed in what size equipment that we were going to get so.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Thank you chief. Roll call vote please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther? Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Okay, now six L consideration of fire department purchase of technical rescue equipment with ARPA funds. Eric, you want to touch on this one?
Sure. So the fire department is looking to again use ARPA funds to do to acquire some technical rescue equipment. And of course, we've got the chief here to talk about what that equipment is to be precise. But you don't want to have to be the person that needs a firefighter to use it to come get you. But nonetheless, we'll turn that over to chief class. Certainly, the requested funds would be used to replace twenty-year-old current equipment that has been on the trucks, rope rescue harnesses, carabiners. There's obviously a life expectancy with this stuff. Any high angle rescue situation or trench or anything like that. Our members get training at Volk Field as part of Wisconsin Task Force. So they've got the know-how, they just need the equipment and this would be replacing what we currently have.
Okay, any questions for chief? Okay, if anybody'd like to make a motion or additional discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, this is half of the amount. The rural is putting in another half. So it's a, it's a little over twelve thousand dollar purchase, half and half city and rural.
Good, thank you for an add on Penny.
So you said that they're putting in twelve thousand. I'm looking at two hundred thousand, two hundred one thousand four one four and forty cents.
That is for my notes. That's for the Zoll monitors. That's the next.
I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong number. That's my bad. I apologize. I'm like, wait.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry Gretchen, go ahead please.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of technical rescue equipment from CMC as presented by the Menominee Fire Department using ARPA funds for the amount of five thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars.
Okay, good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to Gretchen's motion Laura, please?
I will second Gretchen's motion.
Motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote please.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, great. That takes us down to six M. Consideration of fire department purchase of capital improvements. Project Zoll monitors. Eric?
Yeah, so this one was actually a capital improvement project that was on our original borrowing plan. And we'd originally assigned a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the replacement of the Zoll monitors, which are defibrillator monitoring devices that the fire department uses in its EMS services. The pricing has come in at a cost of two hundred and one thousand dollars, four hundred, two hundred one thousand, four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents, which is above the hundred and seventy thousand that we originally had borrowed for. We do also in the capital improvement plan have a general purchase of equipment to replace old fire department equipment of forty thousand. In order to make the cover, in order to cover the overall expense of two hundred one thousand, chief class is proposing that we take that forty thousand, transition that into the hundred and seventy thousand to cover the overall expense. So that way we do not have to take on any additional funds. That's funny, it's money that we've already bonded for. And he certainly and chief class could certainly explain in more detail what does whole monitors do.
Okay, thank you Eric. Chief?
Certainly. So the cardiac monitors, everybody has seen them either on TV or have had the misfortune of having to need one at your house. But the ones that we are currently looking to replace are ten years old. And they are used on approximately thirty-three hundred calls a year, split between the three that we have. They get beat up. They are in fantastic units. They take a beating and keep on going, but they are in need of replacement. They've eight years is expected life on these and we've gotten ten out of them. So.
Chief, with these old monitors, would you keep them around for backups or you know, exchange them out to you know, others that could use them or what do you do with them?
No, we're actually getting a trade-in value for the three that we have.
Okay.
So we've got three X series that we're getting trade-in value and then a very old E series that was kept. And we're going to put that in the display case at station two. So if anybody wants to stop and look at it.
Great, thank you. Okay Gretchen?
Are we worried about the forty thousand being needed in the next year for other equipment?
No, most of the items that we are looking at have either been covered with ARPA funds or were able to be purchased by other means. So we're sitting okay there.
Well, and I'm very pleased that the not not only the the fire department, the workers, the staff and so forth. But I'm also very pleased that there was ARPA funds to use for this kind of thing. So you know, thanks for the staff to apply for those ARPA funds. Thank you for the council to support that. And I think this is a good use for those dollars. So. This is, I'm sorry, this is not ARPA. You're right, but but the ARPA dollars allowed for everything else. Right? Sorry about that clarification. Okay, anything else for the chief while he's up there? No, Penny?
All right, considering I must have big time last time in, so did the mayor. So we're on the same page. I am going to make a motion to approve the purchase of the Zoll monitors for the total of two hundred and one thousand dollars for a hundred and four, I'm sorry, two hundred one thousand dollars for oh my God, it's a day, two hundred one thousand four hundred fourteen dollars and forty cents. So that we are all safe in our community.
I think you did it. Okay, Mary?
I will second Penny's motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any other discussion on this? Roll call vote please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the budget transfers. Eric?
Yeah, so we got a couple of budget transfers here related to public works and then our water utility. So we're looking at transferring money for out into our maintenance of the meters, which is under our account six one point six seven six hundred. The transfer is needed to purchase two additional cases of radio readers for our water meters and a command link for the department to program them in our system. And we're going to transfer that from our new meter account, which we do have money available for that. We have Jeremy Hoyt, our water superintendent is in the audience that can speak more to this. And certainly Mr. Schofield can as well because Jeremy and David have been working together on this particular project.
Okay, who wants to talk first?
I stole the thunder from Jeremy on the compact excavator. So.
All right. Jeremy?
So hello, we kind of, when I did my budget, we kind of lessened the new meter to to create more money to buy these radios. We've kind of been rationed from since twenty twenty. The production is really slow. So I budgeted for about two hundred radios and like the price went up significantly this year as well. Their distributor called me and said, we have some available. The city of Altoona has been doing a five-year change out of all their meters and radios going to the same system we had. They completed in two hundred and forty-three of those radios were on their way to Altoona. If the council agrees to it and we purchase them, we can kind of intercept that. He will give us a savings of five dollars per radio, but which with all this number gives us a savings of about twelve hundred dollars. So that's why I was hoping to get the additional forty-three radios and we could use them because I never know when a box is going to show up so we can change out some meters. So.
Okay, any questions for Jeremy? If you'd like to support this with a motion again Chad?
I'm just confused with the radio, water meter, radio deal?
Yep, the radio goes either on the outside of the house or inside and that sends the data from the meter to city hall where they read it and then we bill them out. So.
Okay, thank you. Anybody like to support this or add any more questions to this? We can do that at this time. Ryland?
I would make a motion to move or approve the budget transfer as presented.
Okay, motion been made. Go ahead Cody?
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report real briefly. I thought we did more. Oh yes, go ahead.
So sorry about that. We do have one other budget transfer and this is related to your item six A that David Schofield had discussed related to the compact excavator. So we have some funds that we need to be able to transfer in the amount of two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to help cover that particular expense. We're going to be bringing that money over from our maintenance and pumping equipment, which we do have funds available in there.
Is that all of the transfers?
That is all. I do not have any secret ones, maybe.
We had talked about putting both on the same one and then we didn't. But anyways, okay, so that's it Jeff, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the water department budget transfer for the compact excavator as presented.
Could have, that's all good. Okay, good, good motion. Is there a second that Mary?
I will second Jeff's motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Solberg?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
And now this brings us down to claims?
Close. We want to talk about councilmen Luther's attendance this evening. Thank you for being here. In the mayor's report, just want to make the announcement that the lights are off at Wolfski's Bay and they're coming down all the extension cords and the things are being picked up. We spent a couple of last weekends doing it. Another weekend, the weather is so nice that we can pull everything out of the ground. There's not much frost, a few are stuck still, but it was a short season for ice in town, but so I was glad that we had the lake access this year. Ice was actually fairly decent on the lake. So had some pretty good skating on the lake. None of the other, none of our other ice skating rinks in town got flooded this year. But it was a successful season either, depending on how you look at it. Do want to make one little announcement. My wife and I got the chance to attend the hockey game on Saturday night, the Menominee hockey or whatnot Pee Wees, but I can't remember the the Bantams. But my goodness, they skate so hard and they won their their playoff game on Saturday night. And they won a spot for the wild card position on Sat- on Sunday. We went to get again another game. And they lost that game, but they're in a wild card position to go play at Eagle River in a couple of weeks. But if you haven't been to a hockey game for a long time, oh my goodness, I, this is the first time Rita, my wife, had been to a hockey game in years and years and she was like, wow. That's amazing. They're, you know, smash into each other and the puck hits the glass and she's jumping backwards and it was just really a lot of fun. So if you haven't attended a hockey game for a long time, go check them out while the playoffs are on and so forth. Other than that, Eric and I will be attending a housing conference on Wednesday, a project hope. We're working on that on Thursday and we're meeting in the governor's office on Friday regarding some health care issues regarding the region. So we're going to be spending Wednesday, Thursday and Friday in Madison this week. And hopefully we can gain some information and get some results out of those meetings. So we're going down to to see what we can, we can hammer out down there in Madison. Other than that, that's all I've got Eric.
In the interest of some council wanting to get to claims, I have nothing.
Wait, wait, wait. Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was mistaken. In your packets and communication, we do have a sign up for our Red Cedar Watershed Conference. If you do want to go, please let myself or my assistant Pam Wilder know and we will make sure to get you registered for that conference. It is a great conference. If you've never had a chance to attend it, it's certainly worth your time. I can't think of a better way to spend your spring break is at the watershed conference. And we will cover that expense, which makes it even more of a fun vacation than going somewhere warm because why leave Menominee? It's always sunny and tropical. There's no snow. It's beautiful.
There's no snow. Dave?
Dave? Yeah, just a couple of things here. First, one piece of disappointing news, we are still working with the manufacturer and the contractor on the waste treatment plant. At this point, the reactive sand filters are not operating properly. So we're, we're still working on that. We have been in communication with the DNR and they one nice thing is they did clarify that the that our point one really doesn't kick in until April first. That's when our six month period starts. So we have some additional time here. So we're working through on that. The well pump at well four has been replaced. While we replaced the the pump, we did find some other things with the actual well itself that we're going to need to do additional review on. So we're going to be doing that. The well, we hope to put the well back in service here by the end of this week. But we may need to do some televising of the well in in the coming months and and years to make sure we understand what's exactly happening, you know, three hundred and ninety feet below our feet. Cedar Corp is nearing completion of the well site investigation for well number nine. So as we get through that, we'll be coming back to you folks for some next steps on on doing some test drilling and that sort of thing at the locations that we pick. With Attorney Ludeman's assistance, we finalized the contract for the kayak rental kiosk. I have a meeting with them later this week to talk about installation dates and that sort of thing, but we're hoping this summer that people will be able to rent kayaks from the kiosk. And then the last thing is, and Dave Kowinski is here, I believe, but we have issued the first occupancy permits for Estover Terrace. So there, I don't know if there's any renters in those buildings yet, but, but we have issued the first occupancy. So I know we've come to this body a couple of times for development agreements and Platts and wanted to kind of share that we do, we will have residents out there very soon, so.
Great, thank you. Also in communications tonight, I believe we have two new officers here for the city of Menominee. And if they'd like to come up to the podium and just push the microphone on and just introduce themselves as our brand newest police officers from Menominee. So give us your names and tell us what do you think about Menominee?
Hello, I'm Officer Wyland. I'm from Chippewa Falls and I'm glad to be here in Menominee. Actually, Eric hired me. And then I went to the academy and now I'm almost on my own solo patrol, so.
Hey, welcome aboard.
I'm Officer Pollack, originally from the Green Bay area. Went to stout out here and liked the area and here I am and I'm only a couple of months on a field training, but we're figuring it out. There's lots of the job. So we back at it bright and early tomorrow morning, so.
Great, that's wonderful. I don't know if I should tell you what kind of vehicle I drive or if I shouldn't tell you what kind of vehicle I drive. But welcome aboard, gentlemen. Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Boy, I tell you, well, I'm glad we're in communications.
Rough crowd, tough crowd today.
Any other communications from anybody else other than Mr. Luther? Chad?
I would actually like to commend Mr. Class for being so punctual with his COVID money requests.
Well, he was like, how fast was he?
As soon as I said, hey, I'd like you to work on that right away, I had them with in my hand in about five minutes. So he, he was ready to go. And again, I would thank him for that too as well. That, that makes the job a lot easier and to get it moving forward. So that way we can get these projects completed.
Great. Good job. Any other communications? Lee?
Yeah, I just saw a mention in the Eau Claire paper today, there was an article about Herb White and being on one of these veterans flights to DC. And Herb had been a member of this body for a period of time, some time ago.
Oh, that's very interesting. I just talked to Herb in church here about two weeks ago, so I didn't know he did in the veteran flight. That was good information. Thank you, Lee. Anything else from Council? Mary?
I just have a question. Does, do we have a new fire and rescue pickup on the street? I saw, it looks, it looks new. Fire and rescue pickup? Oh geez.
They washed it.
Well, you, you take good care of it, because I thought it was new. Very sharp looking.
Any other communications? Okay, Laura, did you have something? No? Okay, well then we're going to keep moving. Okay, well, we're going to keep moving then. Under claims, if anybody'd like to, we have a revised list in front of you this evening too. Anybody like to approve the revised claims list? Now is your opportunity to do so. Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
I would approve to pay the revised claims list as presented.
Okay, and Ryland?
I will second Mary's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther? Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gans?
Yes.
Solberg?
Yes.
Okay, it takes us down to licenses, regular license lists this evening. If anybody would like to make a motion to support this, we can do so at this time. Penny?
I'll make a motion to support the license list as presented.
Very good. Is there a second to that, that motion? Eric?
I'll second that motion.
Motion been made and seconded to support the licenses as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. And then no closed session tonight. That means we need a motion to adjourn. Cody, you got your arm up?
I'll move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion, Ryland?
I'll second Cody's motion.
All in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, everyone. That was a great meeting. Appreciate it.